Chair Goss.
Here.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Waters.
Here.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Noble.
Here.
Commissioner Moreno.
Here.
Commissioner Swop.
Here.
Commissioner Blair is excused. We have quorum.
Thank you. Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Welcome to the City of Kingman Planning and Zoning Meeting of November 8, 2022. First, we have the approval of last month's, well, actually, the month before last month's minutes. Can I get a motion?
I move to approve the minutes from September 13, 2022.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. They're approved. Okay. Next, we have consideration of public comments. Those wishing to address the Planning and Zoning Commission need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time pursuant to ARS 38-431. Hybrid meeting in-person attendance. Call-in participation and written comments accepted. In-person, those wishing to address the commission in person do not need to pre-register, but space is limited and will be allotted on first-come, first-served basis. Attendance priorities will be given to presenters first and then non-presenters. Call-ins, those wishing to address the commission by telephone will need to pre-register by 9:00 a.m. on November 8, 2022 by emailing planning@cityofkingman.gov and provide their name, address, telephone number. They will be using email and agenda item they would like to comment on. Once registered, a link with additional instructions will be provided. Only those who have pre-registered will be admitted to the meeting. Written comments, all written comments must be submitted prior to 9:00 a.m. on November 8, 2022 by emailing planning@cityofkingman.gov or dropping off the comments at the Community Development Department in the main city complex at 310 North Fourth Street. Each speaker will be given three minutes to comment, and all comments will be shared with the council and attached to the minutes for the meeting. Members of the public can watch or listen to the meeting live via Channel 4 or on YouTube at youtube.com/cityofkingman. Do we have any public comments?
No, we do not.
Thank you. All right, new business. The first case we have is the conditional use permit, case CUP 22-0002. It is a request from James Elson, applicant of Storage Experts at Beverly LLC, property owner, for a continual use permit, CUP, to allow mini-storage warehousing, including internal storage and RV storage on property zone Commercial Service Business C-3. The subject property is 8.75 acres and is located at the northeast corner of Beverly Avenue and Harrison Street in Kingman, Arizona. The property is further described as the southwest fourth of Government Lot 8, except the WLY 30, NLY 15, SLY 40, and Parcel B per record of the survey BK 6 PG 51, Section 7, T-21N, R.16W of BG and SRM, Mojave County, Arizona, APN 320-10-051.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the commission. This is a conditional use permit case for mini-storage warehousing, including RV storage, at the northeast corner of Beverly Avenue and Harrison in Kingman. The applicant is James Elson, and the property owner is Storage Experts at Beverly LLC. This map shows the location of the subject site, and the red box is sort of in the center of the screen. The property is currently zone C3, Commercial Service Business. The property to the west, which is where the Kingman Academy of Learning is at, that's on C2. Centennial Park is to the northwest of the site. This area is on recreational open space. We have C3 zoning to the north and to the east as well, I-40 to the south, and there's C2 south of freeway. So you can see it's sort of a mixture of zones in this area. Now, this is the subject site, again showing the surrounding uses. The academy is to the west, Centennial Park to the northwest, Parkus Village Apartments to the north, Empire Southwest to the east, and the Arizona Virtual Academy also to the east, also Rutherford Village, which is a subdivision with duplexes and triplexes to the northeast. The subject site itself is generally flat. It has about 2% grade to the northwest. Drainage flow is generally also to the northwest. The infrastructure that's within the area, Harrison Street and Beverly are the two streets that border the site. There's a 12-inch water main and a 12-inch sewer main in Harrison, also an 8-inch water main in part of Beverly. Property is vacant except for two 672-square-foot billboards on the site, one at the southwest corner and one at the southeast corner. Some photos of the site looking northward from Beverly Avenue. And next couple of photos are looking east along Beverly toward the east side of the property, the other one looking toward Harrison Street. The applicant conducted two neighborhood meetings on this project back in August. They notified the surrounding property owners within 300 feet, and the site was posted as required. There were no attendings at either of the meetings. They did receive a couple of phone calls and one text message from property owners inquiring about the project. The text message and one phone call was in support. The other phone call was from the owner of the two billboards, just interested in making sure that access is being maintained to those boards for the future. The public hearing notice on this case was sent out actually two times because the last meeting course had been canceled. Site was posted back in September and again in October. Two notices ran in the Kingman Daily Minor, and we did not receive any comments from the public. Engineering mostly, the comments are addressed throughout the report. They just indicated that the pre-application meeting comments need to be properly addressed, and we'll go through those as we go through the presentation here. Fire department indicated need to review fire system plans for the pre-meeting comments. There are no objection to the request from Unisource, and there are no concerns from Mojave County Flood Control. It's not in the floodplain. So the property actually consists of two phases, three phases. The first phase consists of a two-story enclosed mini-storage warehouse building. The total gross area of the building is about eighty, over 86,000 square feet, with about 85,000 of that dedicated to storage unit spaces. Would have an office area of over 1,000 square feet and a 642-square-foot manager's apartment on site. The second phase consists of RV storage buildings to the north of the enclosed warehouse building. The RV storage area is proposed to be secured with fencing and gates that include RV wash area. The first and second phase are contained within the southern four-and-a-half acres of the property. The northern, slightly over four acres, is reserved for future apartments or some other use. However, that's not a subject of the CUP application. Final site plan is likely to be modified to ensure the project complies with all adopted codes, regulations, and possible conditions of approval of the commission tonight. So this plan shows the conceptual layout of the project, showing the building closer to Beverly and Harrison, the south side of the property, the RV storage area behind it, and then the Phase 3 would be the apartments. As you are now aware, the Planning Commission has the final say on CUPs unless something is appealed to the city council. The commission is required to make findings on any CUP approval. The first is that the conditional use is consistent with the objective of the code and the purpose of the zone in which it's located. The mini-storage warehouse use appears to be appropriate to the location and the intent of the C3 zone. Second finding is that the granting of the conditional use will not be detrimental to the public's health, safety, and welfare, and this includes any property damage, nuisances, hazards, and traffic impacts that may be created. Under that section, no apparent nuisances or hazards are likely to be generated by this fairly low-impact and quiet use. Fire department had some comments regarding standpipe construction that has to do with, I believe, the fire sprinklers. No significant traffic is expected. Estimated between 21 and 36 trips would be generated after completion of the first and second phases during the peak traffic hours in the morning and the afternoon, based on the ITES trip generation studies. Engineering also mentioned the need to have a traffic memo. This is based upon our requirements of the street policy. The third finding has to do with the characteristics of the proposed use, whether it's compatible with the surrounding area. The CUP should only be issued when it's determined that the applicant has addressed certain issues to ensure compatibility. First has to do with the bulk regulations in the C3 zone. We went through that in the report. It does appear that that is met. Second has to do with minimum parking requirements. The warehouse, mini-storage warehouse itself would generate the need for 85 parking spaces at 1 to 1,000. The office would generate the need for about three spaces, and one space would be needed for the manager's apartment for a total of about 89 spaces. The concept plan indicates 18 parking spaces. The applicant did indicate their belief that the parking demand would be significantly less than was normally required. They did provide a parking study of a similar type of project in Scottsdale, which was in support of this parking reduction, which estimated the number of spaces necessary to meet peak demand period during, on weekends and Saturdays. The zoning code does allow a reduction in the amount of required parking that is needed for a particular location. However, that is based upon the completion of a parking demand study. Staff is recommending that they prepare such a study and submit it based upon the proposal. The Planning Commission may authorize staff to approve the parking reduction based on a review of that completed study. The concept plan also indicates the two 40-foot-wide driveways on the street, on each street. The locations appear to comply with the street policy. The city engineer did state that there needs to be verification that the site distance is maintained at the driveways in accordance with the ASHTO parameters. Next aspect is that the site appears to be adequate and compatible with the mini-storage warehouse use. There are no specific open space requirements. There's no known noise, light, visual, or other pollutants that should arise from this use. The architectural design standards in the zoning code will be applicable to this property. For example, metal material cannot be in more than 25% of the walls or in toward the streets. That will need to be verified by staff at the building permit application stage. The applicant did provide some colorized renderings of the buildings that show concrete tilt panels, ribbed metal wall panels, over structural steel framing, and steel roof canopies over glazed glass windows at building corners. The architectural details for the facades facing the street will be required to not have blank featureless walls. They do show kind of a relief of a mountain on the side of the building on the Beverly Avenue side. The plan is also mentioning a manager's apartment that could be potentially constructed from storage containers. That is something that is allowed under the zoning code, also requires a CUP. However, we can consider that as part of this CUP approval tonight. So these are the building elevations that they have proposed conceptually. The south elevation is the part that faces Beverly Avenue. North elevation would face the interior or the RV storage buildings. East, sorry, the west elevation would be the site facing Harrison, and the east would be facing the other property to the east. And there's a few other renderings showing kind of the perspective on the ground of what the buildings may look like. The conceptual plan does show landscape areas along the street frontage in Harrison and Beverly. And along the north side of the building, there's a minimum requirement of 10% of the site that would have to be landscaped in accordance with the zoning code. That can be submitted with the site plan review. They can do phased landscaping with each development phase, sure they choose to do it that way, and landscaping can be placed in the required detention basins. Also, site visibility triangles will need to be maintained at the street intersections and all driveways. The RV storage area is proposed to be secured with fencing and steel gates. Screening of the trash enclosure is also indicated in the concept plan. And again, site visibility triangles will have to be maintained for these items. Engineering did mention that muck approval is required, and then council approval is required for water service. There'll have to be a water main extension in Beverly and the installation of two additional fire hydrants installed at 300-foot intervals. Also, an onsite fire hydrant will be required with an 8-inch water main extension and a 20-foot wide easement that would be dedicated to the city. Sewer main extension, while normally required, may be waived, however, as it would not benefit future upstream connections. An existing sewer line, sewer line 15, 14 easement is located on the north side of the property, which mainly would affect Phase 3. Signage will have to be in accordance with the zoning code. Also, outdoor lighting will also have to be in accordance with the code that will be reviewed at the building permit stage. No additional dedications or right-of-way is anticipated to be needed. However, completion of the street improvements on Beverly Avenue will be a requirement of the development of the site. And there's no known historic, prehistoric natural resources on the property. So Planning Staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission approve the CUP request to allow mini-storage warehousing, including RV storage, at the northeast corner of Beverly Avenue and Harrison, affirming the findings in the zoning code and attaching the following conditions. One is to provide a grading and range plan in accordance with the city's design and administrative manual. Two, provide a drainage study for onsite drainage requirements and calculations, which includes an analysis of any offsite flows entering the project and how those flows will be mitigated. Three, provide a traffic memo, estimate the number of trips generated by proposed development. And if the estimate comes up with over 200 new trips in any peak hour, they would need to do a traffic impact analysis in accordance with the street policy. Four, provide a parking study prepared by a traffic engineer of the proposed mini-storage warehouse building in Phase 1, and in accordance with the zoning code, the study may be used to support a reduction in the amount of parking that would otherwise be required. And staff would have the authority to approve that reduction based upon the completion and review of that study. Five, buildings shall be designed in accordance with the general site planning and architectural design standards. Six, storage containers may be used as building materials for the manager's apartment in accordance with the zoning code. Seven, provide a water meter extension in Beverly in accordance with the utility regulations. Two hydrants will be required to be installed within the right-of-way on Beverly Avenue in space 3 and foot maximum intervals. Six, provide an onsite fire hydrant to meet the fire code, served by an 8-inch water main and a 20-foot wide easement dedicated to the city. And nine, the completion of the street improvements on Beverly Avenue in accordance with the street policy. So I'm just going to put up the conceptual site plan one more time for you to take a look at. That concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Rich. Does anybody have any questions for Richard? Go ahead.
I do. I was curious if you, or I'm sorry, anyone had thought about the, you know, added traffic onto Harrison there and what a nightmare it can be during, you know, busy school drop-off hours. They're saying adding, when the traffic is added to those entrances, is during those exact peak times that all the kids are running into school and getting dropped off and a lot going on. And I'm not, it doesn't violate anything, but it does just give me a little bit of pause to, when I contemplate how busy that can be and how much, how many cars are going in and out of those driveways during those times of day.
Yeah, like I said, one of the conditions of approval that we're recommending is that they do provide a traffic memo to analyze that traffic impact. Our review of it appears that it would not have a significant impact, but they still have to go through that process.
That's all. I just wanted to kind of go on record saying I appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure.
I have a question too. So are the calculated trips that came up, the 13 to 22 trips at the beginning and then 21 to 36, is that divided up over the peak hours, the seven to nine, and then four to six? Or is that the amount of trips per each of those peak hours? It was number C on possible impacts of public health, safety, and welfare.
I think I went too far. Let's see here. Yeah, the, I believe the range that we gave was, one was in the morning, one was in the afternoon. I believe is what, if I don't have the staff report right in front of me, but I think that was the case.
So it would be like 13 to 22 trips in the morning and then 13 to 22 trips in the afternoon as well?
I believe that's correct.
Okay. And then my other question is, if you look at the site map, is there a direction of flow that the traffic is going to make? Or is it going to come in both on Harrison and Beverly?
Well, in looking at the way that this is phased, you know, I would say it could come in from either direction. It looks like the intent is to have potentially the RVs come in off of the Beverly Avenue side. The way it's kind of drawn there and maybe exiting onto Harrison, but I would like, I would allow the applicant to answer that question.
Okay. Because I can't tell exactly by scale, but if I'm correct, the driveway onto Harrison is almost identical to where the entrance to the middle school is. They switched the entire traffic flow at the middle school this year so that everybody comes in off Harrison and exits out on Beverly, which would have been better the other way if there was this storage unit. Because if both people are turning, then that lane is going to back up past the traffic light in the morning. That's my only question. So if people were all coming in off Beverly and not coming in on Harrison, that might make a big difference. Okay. But then my other question is, so if they don't have to extend the sewer, does that mean there's no bathroom?
No, they will have, there is sewer in Harrison. The engineering is indicating that they wouldn't necessarily have to extend the sewer in Beverly Avenue because it wouldn't benefit a property upstream.
So there still will be sewer to the property then?
Oh, yes. Yes. It's just a matter of engineering stating that they may be able to waive the normal requirement for a sewer extension because that sewer would not benefit anybody upstream. I believe is what they are saying.
And then would the apartment have to be located closer to where the sewer is then?
Well, the apartments aren't subject to the CUP, but the rest of the site would be developed to the north. And I can put up that map that shows the sewer location. So the sewer is the green line in Harrison. So as you can see, it's, you know, all along Harrison Street. So that would be where you'd come off of. That's where the apartments would tie into the sewer in Harrison.
Okay. Thanks so much, Rich.
Sure.
Anybody else?
Oh, go ahead, and then I'll go.
Yeah, sorry. Chair Goss, Mr. Reggles, I do have a question regarding kind of how these are put together, these applications for these storage units, just in the fact that we have so many tonight. And I'm not privy to how you guys are setting it. Was there like, were these set aside and then worked through, like in batch? Like just this type?
No, it's just the way it kind of worked out. We had, this particular project has been kind of in the works since the beginning of the year. We had a pre-application meeting with them, I believe it was in March. But it took them, because they were still designing, it took them a while to get to the point where they are ready to submit. And then, of course, we had, this was on the agenda last month, and it got bumped to this one. So, but it's definitely been a year for So, but it's, it's definitely been a year for seeing lots of many storage proposals come before us at the pre-app stage, and now you're seeing them before you at the commission level. So, it's just sort of the way it worked out this month.
Well, beyond that, just thanks for the hard work.
Going back to what these two were addressing, I noticed that the peak hours are four to six. That's what they're studying, but the peak hours for that, for that area should really be like 2:45 until probably, what, five? Because that's when all the traffic is releasing from the schools. And I don't know how they would really study that.
Well, we use the, that term of peak hours because that's when the international transportation international, I can't remember the name of it. What is that? Institute of Transportation Engineers. They do studies of, of real, you know, live locations throughout the country. Their studies apparently chose those hours as the peak hours. So it may vary from location to location. But they will have to provide a traffic memo that indicates how many trips they expect to occur on this location at their peak hours of the site. So if it's not the peak hours of the street that's enjoying it, but what are the peak hours that this particular use is expected to, to generate, you know, the maximum traffic? And then based upon that, if, if they, would be expected to generate two, um, trips or more, then they have to prepare a traffic impact analysis, which would look at the whole street system in that area to see how they can mitigate those impacts.
Okay. So if I understand what I heard, the part three of your, of the approval from staff, they wouldn't necessarily be looking at four to six, but they would actually be taking into consideration that school, that, that the peak hours on that road are from, are different than the standard peak hours of when people are getting off of work?
Yeah, I, I don't know exactly. I mean, they, they will have to prepare, let's say, a traffic memo. And they would probably look at other similar types of uses. Like I said, there was a traffic study in Scottsdale that also looked at peak hours, not only on weekdays, but on weekends. And I would imagine they would use similar types of projects to base their estimated traffic generation on that. Knowing that the, the hours, the peak hours on Harrison may, are tied to the school is something important for them to consider when they're preparing that memo. So I would just say it probably needs to be part of their analysis.
Okay. And I also agree that if they're trying to turn left out of Harrison, that, that whole area is so congested already, that would be a nightmare.
Yeah, certain times of day that would be, it would be tough.
Yeah, just at those certain hours of the day. The other question that I have is, so recommended by code are approximately 89 parking spaces. And then there, the applicants are proposing 18 based on what they think would be appropriate?
Based, I believe, on, on past experience and a similar project, I believe, that was in Scottsdale that they did a study on and they came up with a number. But I'll let the applicant address that part of it. We're just saying, if you're asking for less than, than what the code requires, you have to prepare a, a, a study and, and, you know, back that information up. And we'll take a look at it, and if we agree with it, we can, we can allow you to have fewer spaces. I don't know if it'll be 18 or if it'll be more than 18, but it would be something less than, than the 89.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Can, like the traffic impact study, I think I used the phrase correctly, but would that be able to determine things like, hey, we might want to go ahead and have like a right turn lane put in there, for instance, to help deal with the, on Long Harrison versus having large motor coaches or people pulling boats, sitting there, trying to make a turn and, you know, traffic being backed up and stuff like that? Is that something that is part of, for instance, it's helpful to make those type of adjustments later?
They're, they're being asked to prepare a traffic memo at this point. If, again, if the memo does indicate that the traffic impact will be significantly more than what we're expecting it to be, part of that analysis would have to be things like, you know, right turn lanes and other things like that. I'm, I'm expecting, because we're not thinking that that level of traffic is likely to be generated, it's probably just going to end up being a memo that says, we think this, I mean, this may, this may traffic will be generated, engineering will take a look at it, and that's probably as far as it would go. Based upon what we think the traffic generation would be.
I have one more question, Rich. Are, number three that talks about this memo, if the estimated number of vehicle trips is over 200 new trips, then they have to submit this. If we are not comfortable with that, is that something that we can change in our approval process? Because if there were 200, if there were 199 vehicles at seven o'clock in the morning, there would be no children getting to school on time. Like it's, like we cannot have that many vehicles trying to enter off Harrison. Like it's just not going to work. So is there a way that we can change this? Because 200 trips is a crazy amount to have at a peak hour in a school zone.
Chair, so I've done a couple of storage facilities. And the peak hour generator, it, it's done through the ITE. And it's specific to the facility, what the facility use is going to be, that kind of thing. For a storage facility, the peak hour is going to be on the weekends. It's not going to be during the week. During the week, it's probably half. So for a facility like this, the peak hour, like Rich is saying, is going to be between, I think he said 21 to 36, something like that. That's actually on the weekend.
Okay, because yeah, he put weekday for everything. Okay.
That should be on, during the weekend.
On a weekend.
Yeah.
Because if it was how it's presented here, that's a lot.
Right. The other, the other thing to take into consideration is currently, right now, the way it is, is, is if it's under 200, right, it requires a, a memo, right? If it goes over that threshold, then at that point is, is when it requires a full traffic study, right? So that's automatically in the streets, regulations and everything. So anything under 200, based upon the memo and the things that go into it, based upon this research, that research, and the research that they put into it, that helps the engineering department to determine whether or not it's going to require an extra turn lane or this and that. Do they have that ability? They do, right? But that's all based upon the research that comes from it. And when you hit that mark, right, that's the threshold of when an entire traffic study comes into play, which what that does is that takes in, that, that makes the geographical area of what's studied bigger on the effect that it's going to have throughout that entire area as opposed to this specifically like Beverly and Harrison. Does that make sense?
So in the, in the city, the, they have street regs or street regulations. And it's mandated in there that if the traffic memo indicates that there's going to be 200 trips in the peak hour, that you have to do a traffic impact analysis.
But what if there's 100 trips at eight o'clock in the morning? That triggers nothing?
So, so that, the, the research that's put into that, based upon those numbers, is what the engineering department will use to dictate what the design would have to be. So it's, it's kind of, at, from this, at this level here, right, the engineering department's going to say, okay, well, based upon this information and this part of the study, yeah, we do need to widen this, or we need to add a traffic light, or this, or that, or whatever it, whatever that information dictates, they'll take that into consideration and make those determinations. And then based upon the bigger, you know, if it goes over that 100, or when you get to that 200 mark, that is when the study gets bigger and, because it's going to affect more than just that specific area. So, so I, I think the answer to what your question is, is yes, all of those things will be looked into. And those thresholds that are in the report are just saying, okay, currently, right now, based upon what we're looking at, this is where we're at, okay? Now, again, this is not our specialty, right? We're requiring somebody who has the larger special training in this to give a professional, essentially, opinion on it. And then we'll take that information and do what we do, if that makes sense.
Okay. Thanks, Sean.
You bet.
Does anybody else have questions for Rich? No? All right. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right. I'm going to open us up to public comment. Does anybody have any comments to give us? I see none. Okay. I will close that and open up commission discussion. Okay, so I have something to say. I know, shocker. So I guess my only other question is, is that we just approved another storage unit on the same road. And I'm just going to leave it there as that is a concern I have as well for traffic. We've added one on the side of the intermediate school, and now we're sticking one by the middle school on the same road. So, yeah. There you go.
I wanted to ask Commissioner Noble about his experience with that and whether he's concerned about impact from traffic based on your experience.
From the storage facilities, you mean, impacting the, the school traffic? So I, I drop my kids off every day, every day at the school. I don't think the impact from the storage facility is going to be minimal compared to the, the impact from the schools. In the morning, there might be four to five cars exiting or entering the storage facility at each, each location. I don't think it'd be a huge impact compared to what the schools and the, and the apartments are doing.
Okay. That's helpful.
Chair Goss, just, I, I remember the one that was approved on the road. There were some concerns such as people living in, in storage facilities, people dealing drugs through fences on them or things like that. So we had to make sure that there was a, like an, somebody on, onsite. Recently, I just brought up, you know, in case there was a fire, like that might be a concern, especially with a school nearby. So, in general, I've been in favor of these things. Just whenever I see like a mad dash to have these things made, it makes me wonder if we're missing something, you know? Especially when the people applying for these are sometimes out of town. So, I don't know, maybe I'll do some research on my end, but I don't see anybody from the public speaking out against these things. So it makes it hard for me to make a case against them, you know? And certainly the elevations they provide, it looks pretty good to me. You know, I'm just speaking in general, so, anyway, that's just my thought.
I will say that Kingman in general is out of storage space. So I think that's one big reason why people are building them because I know, for example, trying to store a boat or something like that, it's almost impossible right now. So I think they are good moneymakers. But, you know, there's a case to be made for people not being hoarders either and just selling their stuff, but it's just my opinion.
Well, I think this is the first one to have RV storage as well, that I recall. So that's good for the community for sure.
Yeah, we, I think we approved one over off of Railroad earlier this year or late last year that, it's never begun construction, but we, it came before us as well, which was going to be, I think, purely RV. But it hasn't happened yet. One last quick question, it's probably just technical, but when the, up the third phase with the apartments, Mr. Ruggles, comes along, that would come before us again to discuss at that time?
The apartments are actually permitted use in C3 districts, so it wouldn't be a, a subject of your review.
And, and there would be a different traffic study that you all would, or not study, but a memo, et cetera, that you all would handle at that point and could make recommendations?
Apartments on the project would require a memo, memo, and then depending on, again, the number of amount of traffic that would be generated, if it hits that 200, 200 vehicle trip mark, then they would have to prepare a, a full on traffic impact analysis.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Okay. Then I would just ask that on page nine is where conditions one through nine are of staff recommendations. As long as people have their questions answered on those, we can go ahead and make a motion.
I move to approve conditional use permit case CUP 22-0002 with all staff recommendations, one through nine.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Can I get a roll call vote?
Chair Goss?
Approve.
Commissioner Quinn?
Approved.
Commissioner Waters?
Approved.
Vice Chair Noble?
Yes.
Commissioner Moreno?
Yes.
Commissioner Swop?
Approved.
We unanimous, motion approved.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have conditional use permit case CUP 22-0005. Excuse me. All right. That is a request from Dana Sellen slash Aquatic Construction, applicant and property owner for a conditional use permit to allow many storage warehousing on two parcels zoned commercial service business C-3. The subject property is 3.42 acres and is located at 4200 and 4220 North Stockton Hill Road in Kingman, Arizona. The property is further described as Lot 3 and 4, Block S, Lake Mojave County Club Estates, Unit 3, amended section 3.1 T dash, or T period 22N, R.16W of VG and SRM Mojave County, Arizona, APNS 324-10-029 and 324-10-030. Can I get a report from staff, Gary?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Good evening. I have another many storage case before you, and it may happen again tonight, as you know. This is for the request on 424220 Stockton Hill Road, currently addressed as such. And it's from, as you mentioned, Dana Sellen and the property owner is Mojave Self Storage. To give you your bearings, here is Stockton Hill Road on the left, running north and, sort of north and south, generally. And the subject property is in the yellow polygon there with the star. And then it's kind of zoomed in there on the lower right of your, your screen. You can see the site. It's vacant right now. And it's about 3.42 acres. The general plan, the 2030 general plan, that is the visioning document for the city, designates the property, and all of the property in red has community commercial, which the C3 zone, which you see mostly on Stockton Hill Road, is, is a supported zone. So that it complies with the general plan in that, in that situation. The property to the east, actually Sierra Road is, then becomes the county. So that's the border there. So on the county side, they have a residential zoning designation. But we, we actually, on our general plan, we designate that as, as rural density residential with one dwelling unit or less per acre. So in that case, we do designate that area in our general plan. However, we don't zone it. So I'll show you that next. As I mentioned, the property and, and the surrounding area on Stockton Hill Road is Zone C3, the commercial, a very high intensity use zoning designation. And I point out there on the city boundary, running north and south along Sierra Road. And the research that I, I pulled up shows that the boundary does stop at the property. So it doesn't include Sierra Road. So that's all in the county. And they designate, they, those areas are designated as AR, Agricultural Residential, I believe is the zoning designation. The surrounding land uses to the site. The site is vacant and the north, to the north, there was manufactured home sales, some car rentals, et cetera, in the past. Across Stockton Hill to the east, tire store, motorcycle repair, a lot of vacant land or underutilized land in, in some cases. And to the south, there's an auto dealership. And then to the east in the county, you have a church directly east. And then a single-family residences to the north and south of the, the church. The utilities and physical characteristics of the property are such that we have eight-inch water mains on Sierra Road, Stockton Hill Road, and then up on Sierra. we have eight inch water mains on Sierra Road, Stockton Hill Road, and then up on Sierra, what's that road? The one that runs east-west, it's Sierra, it's Vista, okay. And so you've got water lines surrounding the property essentially. You also have the eight inch sewer main in, in Stockton Hill Road. And the site generally drains to the southeast. And it's generally flat. Here's some photos we took when we visited the site and posted signs. Sierra Road is, I've got some arrows there. You can see the building to the south, is that long building there. Stockton Hill Road is to the west here, so I'm on the eastern side with my back to the, the church property and Sierra Road. Sierra Road again is to your left and Stockton Hill Road there, just another example, actually can see some drainage that occurs when a site is not developed or it's been cleared, things like that. Some more photos looking northwest in this case, Stockton Hill to your left, Sierra Road to your right. I can't see it with the zoom stuff in the way, but maybe I have a better picture. This shows that the road is generally unimproved. This is a view, kind of pieced together of the church directly across the street to the east, so across Sierra Road. They have some concrete parked in there, some gravel, some mature landscaping. The applicant did go through their citizen review process and did hold two neighborhood meetings in June, on the 24th and 25th, and they notified the surrounding property owners within 300 feet. And the site was also posted with their own sign. There were two attendees at those meetings, and the applicant stated that the attendees were generally indifferent about the project. And so there were no real comments to, to be had, so. Notice of the public hearing for this, these meetings were done for the same distance property owners on the 21st and 19th, 21st of September and the 19th of October, because we had to renotice, because of the last meeting, we didn't hold it. The site was also posted on September 22nd and October 20th. Published in the Kingman Minor on September 25th and October 23rd, no comments have been received thus far. Engineering department had comments and they are attached to the staff report and are embedded and summarized within the staff report. Fire department had no comment, building had no comment, UNS electric, no comment, or no objection, I should say. And then Mojave County Flood Control, no comments, it also is not in the floodplain. The conceptual site plan, which fortunately, unfortunately, you can't show it on the same slide as this, indicates that the total gross floor area for all the buildings would be about 64,000 square feet for storage units and about 660 square feet of office area. Storage, storage units will be accessed primarily from Stockton Hill Road with a secondary, and it's labeled as exit only, onto the unimproved road, Sierra, Sierra Drive. The paved internal driveways will be provided between the units. The, will also have parallel parking spaces that are provided internally, they're also adjacent to the storage units. Other parking will be provided next to the office, including the required ADA spaces. And office parking will not be located within the gated area, which is nice for customers, they don't have to figure out how to get to the office going through gates, so they just pull up and, and get to the office before that. And they provided, you'll see on there, some, some distance from Stockton Hill Road before the gates occur, that allows that stacking or queuing area in case you get large vehicles or three guys show up to help somebody move out or something. Stormwater detention will need to be provided above ground or below, and will likely be in the southeast corner of the property, that's the lowest, the lowest spot. If the CUP is approved, a formal review of the site plan will be, will take place to ensure that all of our codes are met, that we've adopted, and including the conditions of approval that this commission may adopt. Here's the conceptual site plan, I don't have the color coding for all this, but you can see generally the perimeter is, is our buildings, storage buildings. On the left there, the bluish and burgundy, I guess, the smaller squares there, those are along Stockton Hill Road, those, that's the office area. And you can see the parking area for the office, the ADA and all that is right there. So the rest of it is, is 64,000 square feet of storage units so far. That's before they've, you know, accommodated all regulations, so it may grow or decrease generally. Anybody have any questions on this concept plan, we can always come back to it, if you have any. So my screen sharing is paused. Not sure if that, it's showing up there though, so people at home should be able to see it too, so I'll just proceed unless we get a call from IT or something. Rich mentioned that CUPs now, fortunately, you just go through the Planning and Zoning Commission unless appealed to the council, so that frees up a lot of time for the council, and that obviously is a sign of trust in their commissions, that they, they want you to make decisions and, and they, they accept your decision-making. The, there are findings that need to be made by the planning commission in order to approve a CUP, and we'll go through those. I think... Okay, the first one is that the conditional use is consistent with the objectives of the code and purpose of the zone. This is C3 zone, storage units are allowed in that zone with a conditional use permit. That's consistent with those objectives. Number two, the granting of the conditional use will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. No apparent nuisances or hazards are likely to be generated by this fairly low impact and quiet land use. Limitation to hours, though, 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, a condition of approval that's proposed, would limit potential impacts to residentially zoned property to the east. Storage of hazardous materials is prohibited already. Drainage study will be, need to be conducted and submitted with a grading and drainage plan, and they'll need to comply with our design and administrative manual. A trip generation report, which you guys might be familiar with, will be required to confirm whether a traffic analysis will be required. Number three, the characteristics of the proposed use are compatible with the surrounding area. The bulk regulations in the C3 zone appear to be met, these buildings are generally very low. People still get their views of the mountains, things like that, versus what could be a lot taller buildings there, so that's low intensity in that regard for bulk. And normally, we do require a 10-foot setback when a property is adjacent to a residential zone, which would be to the east. However, we've determined that the street would act as that buffer rather than directly abutting a property. And that street therefore provides that buffer, and therefore the 10-foot setback isn't necessarily required there, so. Now, if the commission wishes to impose that 10-foot or something, that's, that's your prerogative, but that's how we've, we've determined that, in this case and other cases. Minimum parking, approximately 64 spaces are required for the proposal, and there's a lot of potential parking areas on here with being adjacent to buildings. So they'll have to obviously provide that exact number, and we'll do the analysis and everything at the time they submit for the building permit and site plan review. Site plan, the site appears to generally be adequate for the ministry land use. There are no specific open space requirements. D, the, there's no known light, noise, light, visual, or other pollutants that should arise from this use. The last one there, architectural standards, that the, all the walls and portions of walls that are oriented toward adjacent streets, public rights away. Will have to adhere to the design standards, architectural design standards. And what most people want to know about is that, that does limit the use of metal to, as an exterior material to 25%. But there are other things, such as long, blank walls, things like that, that we look for too. I didn't do that. That's... Now they've got Rich's PowerPoint up, okay. Let's try this again, here. Characteristics of the proposed use is compatible with the surrounding area. For compatibility, they will have to do 10% of the site, net site area will need to be landscaped, and we'll review that landscape plan when it's submitted with the building permit. Utilities can be accommodated here, and there, that a fire hydrant will be required in the Sierra Road right of way, quote, near the proposed driveway, that's from the engineering department. They also noted that there is a sewer tap north of the lot line between lots three and four that should be utilized for sewer service. Signage and outdoor lighting will meet all the requirements for the zoning code, will need to. And this includes, for lighting, fully shielded wall pack lights, fixtures within 50 feet of residential zones. Will need to have internal or external shields. And then also with other mini storages that we've done in, in the recent past, we've added a condition of approval that states that no direct light source, so the actual element, shall be visible from the property that are residentially zoned to the east of the site. The additional development and dedications of right of way for Stockton Hill Road are not anticipated or needed at this time. However, any required dedications and/or development of Sierra Road will need to be negotiated with Mojave County by the applicant themselves. Staff has provided Mojave County with the full proposal, the application a month ago, and so far we have not received any comment regarding that road at this time. And there are no historic or natural resources on the property. Staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit at 42 and 4220 North Stockton Hill Road for, to allow mini storage warehousing. By affirming the findings as stated in the zoning code and by attaching the following conditions. The conditions were in your staff report, so you've had those to look over. I would note in my PowerPoint, in red and in cross, how would you call that, strike through, I've amended those proposed conditions because there was minor errors to it. And that would be on number three, it's actually 10% of the development, of the net site area that needs to be landscaped, not five, because this is a new site. I won't go into that, but. Then the continued list on item number 10, strike through of residential neighborhoods south and west of the site, which we know that's, that's gonna be Stockton Hill Road, that's an error. So residentially zoned area to the east is, is what is supposed to be in those conditions. And those are all the conditions. Here's the conceptual site plan, if you'd like to end on that, or I can go back to the conditions. But with that, I'll, I'll stand for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Does anyone have any questions for Gary?
Gary, I was just curious, the setbacks, you mentioned the setbacks are reduced, or is it because the road is wide, or because it joins the county?
Yeah, it, no, it says for commercial property, if it's adjacent to residentially zoned property, there is a 10-foot setback requirement. However, we've struggled a little bit with that, but adjacent, in this case, it's not adjacent to the residentially zoned property, which would be across the street. So we're saying that 10-foot requirement is not applicable here because the road already creates a much larger setback.
So it's adjacent to Sierra, and Sierra is adjacent to the residential, okay, alright, gotcha.
Chair Goss, Gary, is there any need for a retention basin to be put on the property? I mean, I've seen a few developments lately, and they have a big carve-out of their property for retention basin, maybe because there's a drainage already nearby, that's why this property doesn't need it?
No, they will. It's, I, I believe it's just not determined if it's gonna be above ground or below ground. So, if it's below ground, then this may work out generally. If it's above ground, yes, definitely that'll be carved out, you know, for open area.
Does the term adjacent, you know, used by you all very specific in the way you define it, or does it follow the standard definition? Because by standard definition, it doesn't necessarily need to abut something to be adjacent to it, it can, it just means there's no kind space in between the two spaces.
Right. We, we've gone through various dictionaries to make sure we're trying to interpret correctly. I think we've come up with just, if we're gonna say a budding, then we're gonna, we're gonna use that as your right, your property line is my property line. And we'll use the adjacent a little more loosely, I guess.
Okay, so, yeah, alright, thank you.
We may refine that in a future code.
Any more questions, oh Gary? No? Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, I'll now open it up to public comment. If anybody has any comments to make, please step forward and approach the council. I see none. Alright, I close public comment and open it up to commission discussion.
I got something. We were just, I've had discussions with other people about certain kinds of buildings being located close to each other, right? Is this something as a planning and zoning commission we have to worry about? I think there's a couple of storage units, one we just approved next door to another one, and then this one's gonna be right down the street, kind of what we were just talking about, the previous one. Is that of concern to anybody? Of having too many storage units in a square mileage?
I have, I have so many concerns about so many different businesses.
Do you know how, how far away this one is from?
Gordon and Stockton Hill Road was, is a current one, right? And then we just approved one next door to that, and then this would be on the same city block area, right?
I don't know. As far as I know, we don't get to decide what kind of businesses come to town.
Chair Goss, I know the city, when they put together these reports, they'll say if it, if it's in keeping with the city's general plan, whatever, and I know typically it's, could be made the case that it is, you know, is, is how they frame it. In terms of aesthetics, I, I actually think these things are pretty low impact, and we've used that term a lot. There's not very much traffic associated with them, there's not many people coming and going. So, in terms of the aesthetics of the entire street of those things, so that might be an issue, something to keep an eye on.
Fair enough.
I mean, my only other point is, depending on who builds which one first, the rest of them may or may not decide to go through with it. If we get, you know, three, and then we've still got six left to be built, who knows what'll happen? We may get them all. Alright, does anybody else have any discussion? No? Alright, well then, we have all of the staff recommendations on here. Okay, so there's one through 11. Anybody wants to make a motion?
Next page.
You're right, there are 17.
Chair Goss, I, I move that we approve the conditional use permit allowing expansion of mini storage warehouse at 4242, sorry, 424220 North Stockton Hill Road by affirming the findings as stated in KDC240.040.e following the conditions outlined by staff with the amendments provided for items three and 10.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, can I get a roll call vote?
Chair Goss?
Approve.
Commissioner Quinn?
Approved.
Commissioner Waters?
Approved.
Vice Chair Noble?
Yes.
Commissioner Moreno?
Approved.
Commissioner Swop? Unanimous, motion approved.
Thank you. Alright, next we have a conditional use permit case CUP 22-0006. This is also a request from Dana Sellen slash Aquatic Construction applicant and property owner for a continual use permit CUP to allow expansion of mini storage warehousing on property zone commercial service business C-3. The subject property is 5.18 acres and is located at 3855 Sunshine Drive in Kingman, Arizona. The property is further described as lots nine through 12, block 14, Shangri-La Estates, second amended, section 5, T dot 21N, R dot 16. Section five, T dot twenty-one N R dot sixteen W of the G N S R M Mojave County, Arizona. A P N three two zero dash zero two dash zero four seven A. Do we have a report from staff?
Yes.
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you, Chair, members of the commission. Yes, this is for. An expansion, a conditional use permit for expansion of a mini storage warehouse, warehousing facility at thirty-eight fifty-five Sunshine. The applicant Dana Sellen, Dana Sellen and property owner Aquatic Construction. Here's a vicinity map for you. Sort of jump to the east, a little further east from where we were on the previous case. Andy Devine is running generally north, to the northeast there. And then the subject property is outlined in yellow, both on the zoomed out map and the zoomed in inset there on the upper left. It's a triangular shaped lot there, and hopefully you have all your bearings, the, I'll point this out later, but. Kino down there on the bottom of the map is where the county community development services are, just give you some bearings. The site, subject site is five point one eight acres. The city's general plan twenty thirty map designates the property, along with all that area in red. As a community commercial, which the C three zoning designation is consistent with that designation of the general plan. The other properties in the vicinity to the west are designated on the general plan as medium density residential. To the north, you have intermediate density residential. And then the dwelling units per acre is in there too. And then to the further south, you have the blue, which is the across Andy Devine, public quasi-public, and then manufacturing industrial as well. The zoning of the properties, well, the subject property is zone C three, commercial. And the properties surrounding it, you're going to have residential R one six to the west. The larger lot, R one twenty to the north. Little higher density residential, R two, also to the north, along Apache Street. A little bit of industrial I one there in the northeast. And then across Sunshine Drive, which runs also north, east, southwest. Across from there is also the commercial, the C three zoning. And then as you get towards. Andy Devine, you've got the industrial use, and I. Shouldn't say this, but I sometimes wonder if it's, if it's the color gray we use for the zoning designation, or if it's the property itself that looks gray. Because it's industrial, I, sometimes I get confused, so. Surrounding land uses in the immediate vicinity generally have some vacant land to the north and to the west. But those are residentially zoned and general plan designated. And there is current activity with the subdivision to the north. We've had resident, you know, continued active residential construction to the north, as well as a subdivision improvement plans that are being. I believe they've already been approved, Rich, is that correct? The subdivision to the north, the improvement plans, I think they've already been approved for construction. Yeah. Yeah. So to the north. To the southwest are also existing mini storage units. And then to the across Sunshine Drive are some various commercial activities, including some tire sales and repairs, some welding. There's also, well, the welding is actually, there's a residential structure there that has a home occupation for welding. But generally, it's commercial, and then further towards Andy Devine, it's currently vacant. Utilities and physical characteristics of the site. We have some, an eight-inch water main that runs. Along Sunshine Drive in front of the property. And then an eight-inch water line that runs. You can see along there, along Jewel Street, it's the street that runs along the left side or the west side of the property. It extends up to a certain point there, I believe it's three hundred, I have it written in the staff report, three hundred feet or so. And then the general flow of, say, stormwater would be to the northwest. So there, the area does have a mix of some improvements, infrastructure and some developing infrastructure, as you can see. So Sunshine Drive, for example, is not fully improved. However, I'll show you photos where the subject property, the part, the portion that is developed. They do have street sidewalk and street improvements along that sunshine frontage, or frontage of Sunshine Drive. I'll show you those photos in a second. Here, a visit to the site and posting of the sign, the notice sign, here's the site looking north. And the northwest-ish. But there, this property is kind of angled weird, there is the screened RV, they have some RV storage on site currently. So that's to the right there, that black fencing. And then as we look more north, northeast, it seems weird, but it, again, the Andy Devine and Sunshine Drive, the way they're angled. This looks north, northeast, and you can see Sunshine Drive, it's improved. In front of the subject property where it's been developed, and it stops at a certain point. And as, where you see it stopped, continuing towards the bottom of the picture. That's the whole area that's subject to this, this conditional use permit and development proposal. Looking northeast, again, Sunshine Drive, there's some, the commercial development. With no real curb gutter sidewalk, anything like that, just asphalt. And then looking east, that's actually the residential unit, I believe, that has the home occupation for welding. And looking south, southeast. Subject properties on your right in this case, the storage units that you see on the right, those are actually off the property, that's the storage units to the south. To the west, across the street, is that, I believe it's the tire facility. And then, this is, I wish I could go back to the map, but this is Jewel Street, it runs along the west side of the property. I pointed out there was some waterline infrastructure that runs along there. This is its current state, it's unimproved. I tried to put the yellow dashes in there, if you can see those on there, kind of showing the right of way area that's included there, where the street would, would be if this were improved. And the power lines falling in the, outside of the property line. That fence on the right is the southern tip of the subject property, where they have it fenced in with some barbed wire at the top. The property owners, or the applicant, did do a citizen review process on July twenty-ninth and the thirtieth. And they notified the property owners within three hundred feet. And there were no attendees at those two meetings, so. There are no meeting minutes or notes to really reflect on or talk about. The public, this public hearing was also noticed, giving notice to property owners within three hundred feet. September twenty-first and October nineteenth. Sign was posted and reposted on September twenty-second and October twentieth. A public notice was placed in the minor on September twenty-fifth and October twenty-third. And no comments from the public have been received at this time. Engineering comments, this is the staff and agency comments. Engineering comments were plenty, and they are attached to staff report and are summarized in the report and embedded. Fire department, no comment, building, no comment, UNS, no objection. And Mojave County, no flood control, no comments, it is not in the flood plain, special flood hazard area. The conceptual site plan indicates that the total gross floor area of new buildings, because they have those existing mini storages. Is sixty-three thousand square feet. Built out, the site would have approximately eighty-seven, eighty-eight thousand square feet of mini storage facilities. And about sixteen hundred square feet of that existing office area that they have. The storage units would be accessed primarily from Sunshine Drive with additional access along Jewel Street. Paved internal driveways will be provided, be provided for the site in between the units. Parallel parking spaces will be provided internally, also adjacent to those, or possibly abutting, the storage units. Other parking will exist for the office area, and actually, it already exists for the storage unit and the office area. If C U P is approved, the formal site plan review will take place. And I wanted to mention this when I heard your conversation at the end of the last hearing. Just to keep in mind that conditional use permits are uses that are allowed in a zone. But they're only allowed if they can fit in, or they can, they're compatible with, they may have some unique characteristic that needs to be. Addressed at a public hearing that helps it fit in better. But as for, as far as a use, it's just another land use, just like Starbucks or anything like that. But certain uses are handpicked for unique characteristics, and mini storages are one of those. And it could possibly be, in our town's case, it could possibly be for visibility, it could be for blank buildings, it could be. Access, it could be for various reasons why they're, where they're needed. To be in a conditional use permit category. This is the conceptual site plan, so it's not oriented north to south. North is actually to the left of the screen, so if you can reorient into in your mind. It's a little light there, you can see, but I did point out that the primary access is generally where it is now. In that, in that vicinity, along Sunshine Drive, and then the secondary access would be along. What's that street again? I've got too many streets in my mind tonight, Jewel Street, thank you. Jewel Street, which I may mention that this, this site. Was annexed into the city, I believe in nineteen ninety-nine, it's in my staff report. And at the time, they had existing, some existing facilities, some buildings that are currently there. Then they, I shouldn't, I won't go into the staff report necessarily, but then they came in and they wanted to do storage units. After they had been annexed, and they had the C three zoning applied. But then at that time, they found out that the conditional use permit was required for many storage units. So they went through that process to expand, and they did get approval. And it's substantially, their approval is substantially similar to what they're proposing now. And they did construct some parts of the approval, I forget which phase it is. The applicant can be more clear on that. But the rest of it didn't get built at the time, so the conditional use permit approval for that area expired. So that's generally why they're here, to get that approval reinstated. The findings that we've talked about already, that in C U Ps that we need to go over, needs to be. Consistent with the objectives of the code, and we've talked about how many storage warehouses appear to be appropriate for not only the location, but the intent of the C three zone. And again, this is an expansion of that use. Granting of the conditional use permit will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare. No apparent nuisances or hazards are likely to be generated, and staff has proposed limitation to hours, six AM to ten PM. A condition of approval that we've applied in previous mini storages that are adjacent to residential areas. And this would potentially, or limit, limit the potential impacts to residentially zoned property to the north and west. Storage and hazardous areas are prohibited, storage, stormwater storage basins will be, basin will be required, along with a drainage study. Significant traffic is not expected to be generated, and it's estimated thirteen to twenty-two trips may occur during peak traffic hours. Based on that I T E trip generation manual we talked about. A trip generation report is required to determine the need for a traffic analysis. The characteristics of the proposed use are compatible with the surrounding area. This C U P shall only be issued when it's determined that the applicant has addressed certain issues to ensure compatibility. The bulk issues or regulations for the C three zone, again, storage units is, in this case, are going to be low lying. They're not, they're a single story. Buildings will be set back ten feet from residentially zoned property, which would be to the north. The north property line actually abuts a residential zone. However, there, that's also where the drainage is occurring, and they'll put the detention pond area up there. So that'll act as another natural buffer if it's above ground. Many minimum parking requirements for the new buildings will be reviewed during the site plan reviews process to ensure that the parking requirements are met. And performance of the fire code, all that, and that's listed as a condition of approval. I heard the speakers or something. The site appears to be generally adequate and compatible for the mini storage unit, a storage warehouse use. And there are no specific necessarily for open space requirements. No known noise, light, visual, or other pollutants should arise from this use. Now, the architectural standards are applicable to walls and portions of walls that are oriented toward adjacent streets and public rights away. We have those standards, and I forgot to bring a picture, but the storage units actually to the, further to the south. If you, if you drive down Kino, you're driving east to Kino, and it unfortunately doesn't tie in. At an appropriate angle, you have to take that hard right. If you dead in there, you can see this, this long blank wall of just yellow storage unit wall. And those are kind of what we're talking about, when we talk about those long blank walls that don't have any articulation or any, any, any interest in them visually. And that's what they're, what the standards are trying to address. However, with storage units and this being a developing residential area, very, very much so, it's constant pressure to develop for residential. So it's not in the, in the distant future or anything. Staff has proposed additional, and I go into the analysis a little more in, in the staff report. But we're proposing an additional requirement for the north and west facing walls. To have more elements provided in there, whether it, and it's still up to the applicant what they want to propose. But the vertical elements that might be a stone or something that interrupt that long blank wall, color changes, things like that. So as long as that condition's in there, we think that that'll reinforce that, so we won't have what we have down on the dead end at Kino there. Or try to avoid that. The area, number F, or item F there, area equal to five percent of the development area will need to be landscaped. And this is different from when a site is new, it's ten percent, and that's why I had to correct that last staff report. It's five percent for an expanded site like this, so it's different. With that, though, the landscape plan will need to be submitted and the site plan review process. With the original approval of the conditional use permit, the one that's expired. There was a condition placed on, on the approval that the applicant has to put a six-foot tall, in quotes, there, six-foot tall block wall along the entire western property line. And that was to act. I presume as the buffer for residential areas to this, this. Use. Staff is proposing that, because now we have design standards, and with that added design standard or added condition. That may be substantially addressed, that original concern. And then we propose that another condition be that along that western property line. The, there is a requirement of a five-foot landscape strip. That is provided instead, instead of the potential zero lot line, they would have to have a five-foot buffer in their property line. That provides a landscape strip, whether it's gravel and some shrubs or whatever, they, actually, I should point out in the pictures, the applicant in the, in the area that they've currently developed. They have some really nice landscaping along the street up there, it's, it looks really nice, so I know they, they'll do a great job, but. Anyway, that, that's a proposed condition of approval to help. To take away that six-foot, probably just blank wall that goes for hundreds of feet. To now trust in our design standards and put some landscaping in there, that, those, those sort of surveillance are much better than just long blank walls. So staff's proposing that instead of that six-foot wall. Care stricts of the proposed use are compatible. Actually, is that the wrong? That's the wrong one. This is public utilities. Pardon me for a minute. Just pardon me for a minute. Yeah, that's right. That's right. So impact on public utilities. The item G there, public utilities can be accommodated and I showed, showed you there's some sporadic infrastructure placed throughout the vicinity and the area. There will be a need for an eight inch water line extension along Jewel Street and that's that street that's not improved right now. So that extension will need to go from where it stops now on Jewel Street and extend to the north along the western property line. And that would be within the, it's mentioned later, but the street improvements are going to be required as part of development along Jewel Street. So curb gutter sidewalk, street, half street plus eight are per our standards. And so within that, there'll be that requirement to have that eight inch water line in there as well. Signage and outdoor lighting, we have standards for that, including fully shielded wall pack lights for fix, and fixtures within 50 feet of the residential zone, must have internal or external shield and then that added, no direct light source, be visible from those subject property, residential properties to the west and to the north, it should be, are included as condition of approval. The additional dedications of right of way and development of streets are needed and are proposed as conditions of approval. They will be needed, they'll be required anyway, but we're going to tie it, or we're planning, or intend is to also tie it to the conditional use. That's how they did it in the previous conditional use permit approval and that's how we're handling it now. And so there will be a need for additional, a seven foot of additional right of way dedication along Jewel Street and Sunshine Drive. Right of way for the intersection of Jewel Street and Sunshine Drive. Currently, it's a skewed. So if you see Jewel Street there on the west, it heads directly south and intersects Sunshine Drive at a skewed, not optimal intersection configuration. So unfortunately, this wasn't done apparently with, with where Kino would have tied in, but on the, on this one, in this case, the dedication of right of way for Jewel Street to come in at that more appropriate angle to Sunshine Drive will need to be, will be required. The exact dimensions of that and will need to be done by the applicant and their engineer to figure out exactly where, where that would be located, so we don't prescribe that in here, just the condition that it has to occur. Street improvements, improvements are needed along Jewel Street and Sunshine Drive. There are no known historic, prehistoric, or natural resources on the property. And these are, these are the list of conditions. I'll just point out any, so number two is the solid fence and masonry wall. That's actually a requirement for, along the north property line. That's in the zoning code. We do put a condition in number two that no barbed wire is permitted on the eight foot tall wall or fence. If the applicant decides to do a masonry wall, the wall must be of earth tone color, which is actually in the zoning code. See, that northern property line also is where the 10 foot setback is required. Five foot wide setback along the property line, number four, is addressing that landscaping condition we spoke, or I mentioned. The number six is the right of way requirements. Talking about how Jewel Street and Apache are undersized, their right of way is undersized currently at 40 feet. Number seven is the alignment of Jewel Street and Sunshine Drive intersection condition. Then, I don't think there are any other ones that we might, might jump out at you. Let me check something real quick for you. Oh, let's see, they're there. Number 21 is the addressing the architectural design standards, sorry, I forgot I had another slide in there. That's the one that's the added on top of our existing design standards. And then, I think that's about it. So those are the ones that we haven't talked about in, in other storage units or, or sort of boilerplate. So with that, I'll pull up the conceptual site plan and if that concludes my presentation and if you have any questions.
Great, thank you Gary. Does anyone have any questions for staff?
I have a question and I know we're all getting a little tired, so I'll be quick. So the eight foot block wall is required on which side?
The northern property line. So the left side.
Okay.
On this one here.
Okay, and then landscaping is required on 10% and it's required on the other sides, but no wall is required?
Yeah, the, so the zoning code already requires a concrete masonry wall when you abut a residential zone.
Right.
And you're commercial and they're residential. All the other areas don't abut residential zones directly. So those other ones do not have a requirement to have that wall. Except the previous CUP approval required it along that bottom lot line there.
Yeah.
All the way across, that's the western property line, that was required on the last CUP.
So, could the applicants have like a, like a mismatched wall scheme going on where it, like, is that possible if we're not requiring a block wall around all of it, that they could decide to mix and match walls? Is that a possibility?
Yes, so the condition that we put in there, that's in a, sort of above the current design standards, states specifically to ensure compatibility with the emerging neighborhoods, residential areas. Buildings oriented toward the north and to the west shall incorporate as many color, texture, and material changes or architectural details as necessary to quote, provide interest and vibrancy, which, the interest in vibrancy is that squishy language in the, in the design standards, which sometimes make it, makes it difficult to negotiate those. So we've put a little stronger language in here, but we haven't prescribed every 30 feet you must do this.
I guess what I'm curious about is if you're, if you're building storage units, if you're going to want to protect it from theft by having, by having it enclosed by walls. And I don't know the answer to that, but if, if, if the owners are going to want to do that, will they then place mismatched walls on the other areas in order to save money? That's what I'm curious about.
They certainly could propose a concrete wall there, or the commission could say, we don't want a concrete wall there, so if you did some fencing, you'd have to do chain link or something and it would have, probably have barbed wire at the top.
Okay.
But they, they could propose a wall along there and then we may have to relook at how, how much of the design standards it'd need to apply because most of it would be blocked.
Okay.
Interrupted by that wall.
Any more questions for Gary? No? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to open it up to public comment. If anyone has any comments to make, please approach. I see none. All right, I'm closing public comment, open it up to commission discussion. Got anything? No? No? All right. Who wants to make a motion? Watch out for recommendations one through 25.
I will move to approve CUP 22-006. With the one through 25 recommendations by staff. Is there anything else I need to say?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
I'll second.
Motion and second, can I get a roll call vote?
Chair Gos.
Approved.
Commissioner Quinn.
Approved.
Commissioner Waters.
Approved.
Vice Chair Noble.
Yes.
Commissioner Moreno.
Approved.
Commissioner Swab.
Yes.
Unanimous motion approved.
All right, next up we have conditional use permit case CUP 22-0007. A request from KTH Consulting, applicant and Zuni Village Park LLC property owner for a conditional use permit, CUP, to allow an expansion of a recreational vehicle park on property zone commercial service business C-3. The subject property is 4.62 acres and is located at 2840 Airway Avenue, southeast of the intersection of Airway Avenue and Swing Street in Kingman, Arizona. The property is further described as the W one half southwest one quarter, northeast one quarter, except the W 25 to the city of Kingman, 284/827O-RSC7T.21N-R.16. W of VGSM Mojave County AZAPN 320-09-121.
Good evening again, and I'm sure you're all, I'm happy to hear that we're not going to be talking about mini storages in this next one, but we'll be back to that in the next, next item. This is a conditional use permit for expansion of a RV park. The applicant is KTH Consulting and the property owner is Zuni Village Park LLC. The current park is located at 2840 Airway Avenue, this would be expansion of that park. Shows you the subject site, it's located south of Airway Avenue on the east side of Swing Street, which is currently an unimproved city right of way. This map shows the surrounding zoning, like I said, the property itself is zone C3. The existing RV park to the north and east is also C3, as is the, most of the properties surrounding it, except for the property directly to the west across from Swing Street, an area zoned R4, and to the south is an area zoned I1 light industrial. This shows the surrounding uses. Getting to the north is a area of warehouse and a vehicle service garage. The existing RV park is to the north and east. You have a truck repair and service center to the south and southeast. And then generally along the west side of Swing Street is all undeveloped vacant land currently. This map shows the physical characteristics and utilities of that area. Property does border on Swing Street, again undeveloped street. There is however, eight inch water main and an eight inch sewer main in that right of way. There are also existing public water and sewer mains within the RV park itself, which will serve the expansion of the park. The site itself is generally flat, there is a gradual slope to the north, that of course would be the way the area drains. Try to do somewhat of a panoramic view here of the site, looking from north to kind of somewhat to the south, from Swing Street. This is the view looking south on, on Swing. The property is to the, to the left, it's currently surrounded by a chain link fence with barbed wire in the top. The community development manager, after discussing this with the applicant, allowed that, them to forego holding neighborhood meetings due to the fact that there's only seven property owners within the area. Instead, they did send out notices to surrounding owners within 300 feet some time ago and the applicant did receive one phone call from the owner of the property to the west, Mr. Jewels, and they had a discussion about future street improvements on Swing Street. And we'll get into that discussion a little bit, a little bit later. The public notice was sent out to surrounding property owners from the city on the 13th of October, site was posted on the 20th and notice was placed at the minor on the 23rd and we didn't receive any public comment on this project. Engineering comments are in the staff report and summarized within the report. Fire department did comment on turnarounds that may be needed on the site. I'll show you the map in just a moment and potential of need for fire hydrants. The need for fire hydrants was confirmed by the community development manager, that they'll have to have, I believe, at least one onsite fire hydrant. And access pathways will need to include turnaround methods in accordance with the fire code. Use, use source, mentioned the need for electrical easement along the east side of the, of the property. And flood control had no comments or concerns, it's not in a, not in a flood plain. So the intention is to add 53 RV spaces and expand the existing park onto the subject site. 12 spaces will be pulled through spaces and the other one will be back in for the RVs. No direct access is planned on the Swing Street, access will instead be through the existing RV park. Under proposing new paved access roads, expansion of the water and sewer lines to serve the individual spaces, showing a new clubhouse and bath house on the, on the building with parking spaces, several recreational amenities, including two cornhole areas, two pickleball courts, and an area for onsite retention and detention. The final site plan is likely to be modified to ensure the project complies with all adopted codes, regulations, and possible conditions as approved by the P&amp;Z Commission. So this is the conceptual plan for the site. You could see the road, there's a roadway on the north, what looks like the north side, actually the west side of the property. The north is to the, to the right. And so the existing park is, is toward the east or the bottom of the map and off to the, off to the right. They, they are showing a dead end street that would service 12 spaces on the west side and the rest would be served by a series of looped roads that you can see there. Kind of on the right side is where that clubhouse area is and the, most of the recreational areas kind of to the southwest or upper left part of the, the map. That's where the pickleball court and cornhole areas are proposed to be located. And these are just a couple of details of, one is of the recreational area and the other one is of the back end RV spaces. So the zoning code has specific requirements for designs of RV parks. It was originally, if you recall, it was amended earlier this year to accommodate the Tin Can Alley project downtown, so it's, but it mostly affects properties in the T5 MS zone. One of the things that we did change is that now we allow non-movable units in RV parks, to my knowledge, they are intended, these to be just regular RV setups. And also, would you allow tent sites in RV campgrounds? However, no tent sites are proposed in this case. Went through the development standards, appears that the size and density standards are met. Park spaces did appear to measure out to the, to the minimum size requirement. The SEPX and separation standards are met. As I mentioned, there is a existing fence around parts of the site. There is a requirement that the RV park be fenced with opaque fencing. Walls or vegetation for screening purposes. The conceptual plan didn't really indicate how they intend to screen the site. One option would be to use existing fencing, just put slats in that fencing, but they could use other methods as well. That information would just have to be shown in the final site plan. Off-street parking, each space is required to provide room for a gravel or paved parking space for the vehicle that's associated with the RV and that information would need to be shown in the final site plan. Street access and sidewalks, RV spaces are, must be accessible from a private or public street. Primary access will be through the existing park as I mentioned. Primary access will be through the existing park, as I mentioned earlier, from Airway Avenue, with a secondary access from Bank Street via Rhodes Avenue. The minimum standard for the internal access streets is a 20-foot wide street with optional sidewalks. The plan shows a 24-foot wide paved street with no sidewalks. However, also no roadway connection is shown to the existing park. This may just have been an oversight on their part, but that would need to be shown on the final site plan. Also, as I mentioned earlier, they showed a dead-end street to access those pull-through spaces, that is allowed for maximum of 12 spaces, which is what they're showing. However, the fire code and both, both the fire code and the standards for the park do require a turnaround. The park standard states that has to be at least a 60-foot diameter roadway turnaround, and that would have to be shown on the plan. Alternatively, they could decide to have a secondary access connection to the rest of the park roads, that would be an alternative to putting that turnaround. Each RV space will be connected to a private sewer system, which will also be connected to the city sewer system. The design would have to conform to the 2018 International Plumbing Code. Each RV space is required to have water, electricity, and picnic table, unless the tables are provided in a communal area. Also barbecues and fire rings may be provided at the spaces or in a communal area. This information will just need to be shown on the final site plan, what they choose to do for that, for those items. Also, 200 square feet of recreational area is required for each RV space. So with 53 spaces proposed, they would need to have at least 10,600 square feet of recreational area. I mentioned the pickleball courts and the cornhole area. There's another area also for recreation next to the proposed clubhouse. Did a little measurement on their site plan, conceptual site plan, appears that is met, however, they will need to confirm that information on their, on their final submittal. Next we get into the CUP approval process. Again, the findings. One is that whether the proposal is consistent with the objectives of the code and the purpose of the zone in which the site is located in. The RV park does appear to be appropriate, it's just an expansion of a park that's already basically in that location, so appears to be an appropriate use. Granting of the CUP will not be detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare, including any property damage, nuisances, hazards, or traffic impacts that could be created. There may be some noise as rigs are moved in and out of the campground, but all in all, there shouldn't be any major noise, it's mostly residential area, and no hazards should be generated. Also, significant traffic would not be expected to be generated. An estimated 11 to 20 additional trips would occur during peak traffic hours, again from in the morning and then late afternoons, based upon the ITE generation studies. Again, the same comment that we've got in the other cases, they'll have to do a traffic memo, and depending on whether it shows 200 trips or no more in the peak hour, they would have to do a TIA. Next is the characteristics of the proposed use, whether it's compatible with the surrounding area. The CUP shall only be issued when determined that the applicant has addressed certain issues to compare, to ensure compatibility. We went through everything in the staff report, appears the bulk regulations are met. Parking requirements do need to be addressed, that was mentioned during the park development standards discussion. Site appears to be adequate for the expansion of the RV park area. There are recreational and open space requirements that are also, again, addressed in the park development standards. No noise, light, visual, or other pollutants should arise from this use. Architectural design standards would only be applied to any permanent structures on the site, and that would be, right now it's, the clubhouse is really the only thing that's permanently shown on there, and that would be the part that faces Swing Street would be the side that would be subject to those requirements. Conceptual plan does not show any landscaping on the site, however, a minimum 10% of the site would have to be landscaped, and so they'll have to submit a landscape plan with the site plan review, and landscaping may be placed in the required detention basins. Water service, again, will need to be reviewed by MUC, because this is an unsubdivided parcel and approved by council. There'll have to be separate submittals to engineering regarding water line and sewer line extensions, there'll have to be fire hydrants, as I mentioned, fire hydrants required. There are minimum standards for those water line, extended water lines. There'll be need for a 20-foot wide water line easement. And any private water line service, any private water service lines will not be permitted to be parallel within the public water line easements. Future signage will have to be in accordance with the code, as well as after lighting. No additional dedications of right-of-way are needed for Swing Street. Mentioned the issue of the improved roadway. Swing Street is currently not on the city's maintained street list, so as, the policy, the street policy is that if you are developing adjacent to an unmaintained street, you are responsible at the time of development to improve half-street improvement along that, your property frontage, and extend that half-street improvement all the way to the nearest paved roadway, in this case would be Airway Avenue. So what they would be looking at is 615 feet of improvements on Swing Street, and additional, I'm sorry, 660 feet of frontage on Swing Street, adjacent to their property, and then additional 615 feet roughly to Airway Avenue. The applicant, and the property owner I should say, came to the council several months ago knowing that this would be the case, and requested a relief from this requirement. Council ultimately did grant that in the form of a acceptance of a payment in lieu of doing the improvements for their frontage of the street. The amount, this is based upon a engineer's cost estimate of $278,000, approximately $278,000, as for their portion of the improvements that they would be fronting on, and the council also granted a deferral of the rest of the improvements on, that would be extended to Airway Avenue, until the adjoining properties are developed, or other properties in the area are required to also improve that roadway. So that payment will be made to the city after the conditional use permit is approved, if it's approved. So that's been settled with the council, but that's just more information for you to understand what's going on with that street. And then finally, there is no known historic, prehistoric, or other natural resources on the property. So with that, staff recommendation is for approval to, for the conditional use permit to allow expansion of the RV park with 53 spaces at 2840 Airway Avenue with following conditions. Necessarily have need read every condition if you don't want me to, but we can go through them. I think the only ones that are probably super important is regarding the screening, that's number seven, I mentioned that earlier. The rest, most of these are related to engineering comments, in making sure that they show on the site plan that there are street parking, provide the roadway connections to the existing park, showing that on the site plan. Again, the turnaround, either they have to provide that turnaround, or they provide another access point for those 12 pull-through spaces. And then also landscape plan is required, and then the traffic memo, we mentioned that earlier. So with that, I'll just put up the conceptual site plan again for your review and answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you, Richard. Does anybody have any questions for her? I see none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, I'll open it up next for public comment. If anybody has any comment, please approach the podium. Thank you, and just state your name for the commission.
Good evening, my name is Kathy Tackett Hicks, I'm acting as the owner's agent in this. This is a reasonable use and extension of a Zuni RV park, was started almost 30 years ago. There is a need, the park's been full the last few years. There are no adverse impacts associated with it, I want you to know, we did review the staff recommendations, we're in agreement, and I'm asking you to approve the CUP at this time. If you have any answers, or questions, if you have any answers, let me know, but I'll give you a question.
Thank you, Kathy. Does anyone have any questions for her at this time? Great, thanks so much, we'll call you back if we need you. Are there any other public comments? All right, I see none, I'm going to close public comment and open it up for commission discussion. Thank you. Does anybody else have any comments? All right, so we want to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve conditional use permit, CUP 22-0007, with staff recommendations 1 through 13.
We have a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Great, we have a motion in a second, can I get a roll call vote?
Chair Goss.
Approve.
Commissioner Quinn.
Approved.
Commissioner Waters.
Approved.
Vice Chair Noble.
Yes.
Commissioner Moreno.
Approved.
Commissioner Swab.
Yes.
Unanimous motion approved.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to conditional use permit case CUP 22-0008. This is a request from David Ferretti, applicant and Commercial RE Investments LLC property owner for a conditional use permit, CUP, to allow fully enclosed RV and boat mini storage warehousing on proposed zone commercial service business C-3. The subject property is 3.58 acres and is located on 3645 East Andy Devine Avenue in Kingman, Arizona. The property is further described as Shangri-La Estate's second amended parcels, 1B, 1C, and 1D, as shown on survey ID 2933, REC 5/23/11, at fee number 2011027417, Section 5, T.21N, R.16W of the GN-SRM Mojave County, Arizona, APN 320-02-014E.
Good evening again, and we're back to mini storages again. The applicant is David Ferretti, and the property owner is Commercial RE Investments LLC. The property is Zone C3 Commercial Service Business, is located at 3645 East Andy Devine Avenue. Essentially, everything surrounding the site is C3, although there are some residential uses in the area. Show that map here, here we go. There's a couple of single-family homes just to the northwest of the site, there's also manufactured home park to the west. Other than that, it's mostly commercial and almost industrial type uses. You have Mojave County Public Works to the north, you do have Dollar General, which has a parking lot partly on this site, just to the northeast. City of King Public Works is across Andy Devine on the east side, also the MVD office and the A.D. Yard in this area, and also a fueling facility to the southwest that is closed. So the subject site is generally fairly flat, there's a gentle slope to the northwest, that's generally the direction that the drainage flow. There is a water and sewer main, which extends within an easement across part of the Dollar General property and is, terminates on this property at the, kind of the northeast side of the property. A couple of photos of the site looking west, kind of toward those residential areas. You see the Dollar General kind of on the right side there. And then this photo is looking southwest, with Andy Devine on the left side. So the applicant conducted two neighborhood meetings back in September, and they notified all property owners within 300 feet, and they did not receive any, have any intenities at either meeting. Public notices were sent out by mail to surrounding owners within 300 feet on October 13th, site was posted October 20th. Public notice was placed in the minor on the 23rd, and we have not received any comments from the public. Engineering department comments are, again, within the part, within the report. Fire department commented on need for fire sprinklers. Unisource Electric commented on the need for a couple electrical easements on the site, and flood control didn't have any comments, it's not in a flood plain. So the plan shows 92 RV and RV and boat storage units. They're intending on building three buildings for a total of a little under 59,000 square feet. Unit sizes range from 1,100 square feet to 504 square feet. Each unit will have a garage door. In the standards for mini storages, there is a standard that states that individual storage unit, to be considered a mini storage unit, maximum size is 1,000 square feet. So there's, I think, four units that are a little bit over that size, so that would have to be revised in their plan. They are showing one 47-foot wide driveway entrance and exit from the site to Andy Devine, which is a state highway. The gates will be set back about 30 feet from the right-of-way. The interior drives are quite wide to accommodate the RV and boat trailers, ranging from 35 and a half to 55 feet in width. Six-foot high wrought iron fence is shown along the northeast and southwest property lines. They are indicating a dump station and trash enclosure on the site. They provided some conceptual elevations of four sides of one of the buildings, Building A, which is the building that's closest to Andy Devine, and then we always put in that disclaimer, I guess you could say, that the final site plan is subject to changing, changes as, in order to meet adopted codes, regulations, and possible conditions of approval. So this is the conceptual site plan. Again, Building A is the building that you see closest to Andy Devine, B is the next building, and C is in the far, far back. Again, the findings for CUPs, one is, is the conditional use, is it consistent with the objectives of the code and the purpose of the zone which the site is located? And if you, I don't know if anyone has been here long enough, but we've had previous CUP requests on this site. I think Chairwoman may remember that, but those projects have never been constructed. But we determined back then, and would still state today, that it's an appropriate use of the property. Next is granting, the CUP will not be detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare. Next is granting, the CUP will not be detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare. This includes property damage, nuisances, hazards, or traffic impacts that could be created. Also, so there's no apparent nuisances or hazards that are likely to be generated by this, this use. Some considerations should be given, however, to limiting the operations, hours of operation to 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, at least for the, for the non-office-related uses. That's to reduce any impact on the adjoining single-family homes that are nearby in the manufactured home park. Significant traffic, again, is not expected to be generated. Estimating around nine to 15 trips would occur during peak hours. Engineering commented that driveway opening will need to be approved by ADOT, and city, should be included in any of those discussions or design reviews as we're responsible for maintaining that sidewalk pathway that goes in front of this property, as well as the landscaping. Characteristics of the proposed use are compatible with the surrounding area, and CUP shall only be issued once determined that the applicant has addressed certain issues to ensure compatibility. One would be the bulk regulations, appears those are met. Minimum parking requirement would be 58 parking spaces for the storage units, and as we've done for other similar facilities, we allow sort of undefined parallel spaces within the facility and within the internal driveways. So we'll determine that at the building permit stage, but it appears that that's likely to be, to be met. And also, the fire code also determines widths of driveways. It appears, again, that the driveways are, are wider than, than is typical in order to accommodate RVs and boats. Site appears to be adequate to and compatible for the mini-storage use, and there's no specific open space requirements. No noise, light, visual, or other pollutants are likely to arise from this use. Architectural design standards would be applicable, against to the side of the buildings that are oriented toward the, toward the street. The, they did provide some conceptual designs for Building A, in which they indicated the southeast side of the building that faces Andy Devine, as well as the northeast and southwest sides of the building will have a mix of stucco, finished and pre-finished metal siding. And the northwest side of the building, A, which would be facing away from the street, would be just metal siding. They did show some architectural details, including offsets in the walls, variations in, in type of material, and some variations in the parapet height for all but the northwest side of the building. They did not provide any conceptual elevations for Buildings B or C, and I'll show you just in a minute, and we'll go back to the site plan, just, just for a moment. As you can see, the, would be the southwest or the left side of the, of the site plan, parts of Buildings B and C would be visible from Andy Devine, so those, architectural design standards would be at a minimum applicable to those sides of the building that would be visible from Andy Devine. And this is, again, shows the conceptual elevations with the various materials and some of the variation on the parapet height. And the top, top aspect or elevation is the side that would be facing Andy Devine of, of Building A. Now, the conceptual plan does show landscape areas along the northeast and southwest sides of the property. There is existing landscaping along the concrete pathway, which is maintained by the city. However, the, within the site itself, they have to provide at least 10% of the site in landscaping. There will be a landscape plan that will be needed to be submitted with the site plan review. And they can landscape within detention basins. They'll have to maintain site visibility triangles, and engineering also commented on the need to maintain site distance areas at the driveway in accordance with ASHTO guidelines. There are existing public water and sewer mains, as I mentioned, that extend onto the site, and those will have to be extended across the property fringe with this development. And they'll also require a 20-foot, 25-foot-wide minimum with water and sewer easement that would have to be dedicated to the City of Kingman. Two fire hydrants will be required at the north and south ends of the site. And there'll have to be analysis of the fire flow. Access to the utilities and fire hydrants will, will need to be maintained, and they mean to have, have to have some gates in order to maintain access to those hydrants. Again, science standards and outdoor lighting standards would, would need to meet ours, meet the code. We'll review that at time of development. We are also recommending that no direct light source be visible from the property toward the adjoining residential areas to the, to the west. There's no dedication to right-of-way needed, again, this is ADOT right-of-way anyway. And all stream improvements are required. However, ADOT permit will be required in order to have access to the site. And there are no known historic, prehistoric or natural resources on the property. So with that, the staff recommendation is for approval of the CUP to allow fully enclosed RV and boat mini-storage warehousing at 3645 East Andy Devine, by affirming the findings in the code and attaching the following conditions. Again, these are kind of standard conditions. Only thing, it's a little bit, I guess you could say, non-standard would be the hours of operation from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, although that's something we've recommended in other mini-storages that are budding residential areas. Need for landscape plans. I'm sorry, the need to basically be involved in the ADOT permitting process for the driveway so that we can make sure that the sidewalk and landscaping areas are, are addressed during those permitting processes. Architectural design standards, as I mentioned before, will need, will be applicable to the buildings where it's visible from the street. Site visibility triangles will need to be maintained. And dedications of easements. And, and again, the outdoor lighting will need to be in accordance with the outdoor lighting code, and also the adjoining residential areas would need to be protected from any visible light source. So I'll finish with the conceptual site plan, showing layout again, and I can answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Richard. Does anybody have any questions for Rich? No? All right, thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right, I'll now open it up for public comment. If anybody has anything to say, please approach the podium. I see nothing. All right, public comment is closed, I'll now open it up for commission discussion. All right, can I get a motion?
Chair Goss, I move that we approve the conditional use permit to allow fully closed RV and boat mini-storage warehousing on property described in Shangri-La, Shangri-La Estates, 2nd amended parcels, 1B, 1C, 1D, as shown on survey ID 2933, recorded 5/23/2011, at fee number 2011027417. Section 5, T21N, R16W of the G and SRM Mojave County AZ, and located at 3645 East Andy Devine Avenue by affirming the findings as stated in VC, zoning code 2-40.040E, under the following conditions, following 12 conditions.
You like to perform linguistic gymnastics like I do. All right, we've got a motion to the second. Can I get a roll call vote?
Chair Goss?
Approve.
Commissioner Quinn?
Approve.
Commissioner Waters?
Approve.
Vice Chair Noble?
Approve.
Commissioner Moreno?
Approve.
Commissioner Swab?
Yes.
Unanimous, motion approved.
Great, thank you. All right, we have one more case. The abandonment case, AB22-0008. This is a request from Martin Swanty Auto Center Incorporated, property owner and Donald Ward applicant for the extinguishment, abandonment of the public utility easement, PUE. This, the easement requested to be abandoned is a 16-feet-wide and approximately 185-feet in length, extending west from the Stockton Hill Road right-of-way on Lake Mojave County Club Estates, Unit 3 amended, Block R, Lot 18, not including the WLY 30, to the City of Kingman, 5409/213. The easement was recorded with Mojave County in fee number 99008438, BK 3246, PG 687.
Chair Goss, I recuse myself from this one.
Okay.
Do I have permission to proceed, or?
Sure, go ahead, Gary.
Okay. Yes, thank you, Chair, members of the commission. This is an abandonment case for a public utility easement on private property located at 4195 Stockton Hill Road. I'll jump to that aerial photo, this is a quick one, actually. This is a, the commission makes a recommendation to council, so council does consider, consider this at the upcoming, at an upcoming hearing, so. The easement requested to be abandoned is, is, is a eight-foot-wide public utility easement, actually. And it's recorded in 2001. And the portion requested to... Make sure this is accurate. Yeah, this, I don't think this first page is accurate. I'm sorry. This is accurate, though. This is the 16-foot-wide by 185-feet utility easement that is the subject of this, this hearing. And so that area that's in yellow there, depicted at that 475 Stockton Hill Road, is the proposed abandoned area, so. Make sure this is accurate. I'm sorry, the PowerPoint was done today, and it was, I don't know if it was entirely accurate, I really apologize, but. It is accurate that the area around the easement is currently undeveloped. We do have a pending building permit for it, but currently it's undeveloped and vacant land. The surrounding property is commercial land to the northeast and sou, northeast and south. They're all zone C3, and there is a single-family residential subdivision to the west, which is zone single-family, the R15A. Projected land use on the general plan is community commercial, CC. The, the public utility easement was granted to the city in 1998 to accommodate an eight-inch water line and a fire hydrant that was needed for development at the time. The water line and hydrant have been removed, and the easement is no longer needed. The land is generally flat, it's not in the floodplain, not much to go into on this. The, as mentioned, there are no utilities located in the easement anymore. The hydrant and water line have been removed, that was verified by the engineering department, and done through permit DEM 21-0008. So with the removal of that, the easement now is eligible to be abandoned by a vote of the public body, the city council. So. The transportation is, Stockton Hill in this area is 100-foot right, 100-foot right-of-way with four lanes of travel, two in each direction, a center refuge lane. Some of this just had to go over. Notification was done properly on, posted on the site October 20th, 2022, and the King minor, October 23, 2022. And property owners within 300 feet of the easement, not the property, but within the, from the easement, were sent notice of the request and public, the public hearing. They were mailed that notice on October 19th, 2022. No comments have been received. No objections, this department and agency comments, no objections have been received. And city engineering has no objection to the abandonment, and did confirm, as I mentioned, that the public infrastructure's been removed. Streets and sidewalk development rules and regulations, this is just the section of our policies that state when an easement and how it can be abandoned, if it's no longer needed. And the bottom of the page there, just mentioned, the subject easement is eligible to be vacated because it no longer contains any utilities and is no longer needed for any other public purpose. And with that, I would, again, it was just a recommendation that you would make to council. So staff does recommend approval of the abandonment request of the subject easement. And I stand for any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Gary?
Chair Goss, Gary, is this, this easement, they couldn't, they couldn't actually build anything on top of the season, right? Gave over it, or anything?
That would be my understanding, yeah. And they may very well need to dedicate a new easement based on development, that's, that's how.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Can we dive further into this whole abutment thing? Just kidding.
Absolutely.
Any more questions for Gary? All right, thank you so much. All right, I will open it up for public comment, but as my daughter is the only one left, I will now close public comment and open up commission discussion. You guys have anything to add? No? All right, I guess we just need recommendation of approval.
I move to approve abandonment case, AB22-0008.
I'll second.
All right, we have an approval in a second. Can I take a roll call vote?
Chair Goss?
Approve.
Commissioner Quinn?
Approve.
Commissioner Waters?
Approve.
Vice Chair Noble? Oh, God, sorry, he's recused. Commissioner Moreno?
Approve.
Commissioner Swab?
Yes.
Unanimous, motion approved.
All right, last, we just have announcements by commission members, limited to announcements, availability, or attendance at conferences and seminars, requests for agenda items for future meetings, and requests for reports from staff, no discussion on any of these items. Do we have any announcements? My only other announcement is my term has been extended, so I will be with you all until December 2024. So cheers or boos, I don't know which way, but just put that out there.
Congratulations.
Thank you. All right, well, if we have nothing else, we're adjourned.